Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, I believe you're only gonna have three. Total here, or excuse me, four. So I think we're just missing trustee Coombs as well and trustee Corvallin.
Okay, so we'll only have Corum?
Yes, which is just a work session, so you don't really even need that, but that is all you will have.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I'll just send him a quick message, seeing if they can jump on.
Alrighty. Hey y'all, uh, let's just give the other trustees another couple minutes here, probably say another five minutes to see if they join us and then we'll get this meeting rolling.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, I heard from Tanya, she's not gonna be able to make it. I have not heard from Eric.
Okay, we'll give him another couple minutes and then we'll, we'll get the ball rolling.
Is this a typical turnout for a budget review?
Yes, it is. Actually, I was telling Rita this, you know, when when I first started, trustee Taylor, there were only two people who attended. I feel like last year, Jonathan, I don't remember, I feel like it was pretty small last year. Rita and I were actually just talking about maybe in the future wanting to do these before meetings versus a separate night. Obviously, we'd love your feedback on that, but this is not out of the norm, trustee Taylor.
Yeah, last year it was myself and Kristen Conrad were the only two trustees to show up, and that was when we were in person. So I agree, Julian, it's kind of, it's a little bit disappointing when the budget is one of the most, you know, important things that we do as a B.
I would think, yeah.
So I'm going to record, I mean, I am actually already recording. I'm gonna record this and send this to the other trustees. And I guess if there's a desire of the board for, for me.
I hope I didn't insult anybody.
Watch out, it's recording. I, uh, if any of the trustees who couldn't make it tonight want us to like revisit any part of this presentation, um, we can definitely do that. I can obviously stop recording and re-record as well. If we don't want to catch the 10 minutes of silence, but trustee or mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, I'll leave that up to you. Would you prefer I start and stop so people don't have to listen to 10 minutes of silence?
No, I think you can keep recording and I would say at six ten, let's call this to order, so in another minute. And, uh, I'll have you call roll or whatever.
We know who's here. So I'll, can I just make an announcement? I'll just announce who's here. So we have mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer and trustee Taylor from the Board of Trustees. For town staff, we have myself, town administrator Miranda Fisher, community center manager Don Baumhofer, and town treasurer Rita Six. And then community members, we have Janine Hall with the co-responders. And then Scott, is that you from Nedrink Mountain Tennis, or is that Scott Pappich? We have a, I believe a member of the community, Scott here. I'm just guessing who that might be. We'll come off mute, Scott, if you have a chance to tell us who you are. Hey, Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, are we ready?
We are ready, and I believe that is Scott Porter from Nedrink.
That's what I thought. Okay, hi Scott, nice to have you. Alright. So tonight, we are doing the work session number one for the 2022 budget. We're really spoke focusing on kind of three, excuse me, four categories tonight. First is gonna be the tax revenue five-year trend, which Rita will do. We'll then discuss some of the department's capital improvement priorities. I'd like to talk personnel for a little while, uh, being current salaries and possible new positions moving forward. And then just leave it open for questions. We would encourage mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer and trustee Taylor though, that you ask questions throughout rather than saving them for the end. So every transition slide will be an opportunity to kind of recap what we just discussed. Um, we typically don't do public comment unless mayor Pro Tem wants to call for it, um, and so I'll leave that up to him. And I will turn this over to Rita.
Yes, good evening, everyone. First, I'm gonna talk about the sales tax. So if you want to move to the next slide, Miranda. As you can see on this chart down below, we are, um, at nineteen percent above what we were at the same time last year. So staff is recommending an increase in sales tax of six percent over the 2022 actuals for the 2022 budget. We are also wanting to discuss a potential creation of a capital improvement project fund. This was also brought to the board during last year's budget session. A couple of thoughts on how we might go about that would be, we could use a percentage of additional sales tax revenue over the 2020 actuals to set up a fund in 2022. Or consider establishing a CIP fund, maybe even in 2021, from excess revenue. Any questions on that before I move on to property taxes?
Yes, Rita. So this is, uh, this is trustee Taylor. Uh, so I'm, I'm curious about the last five columns there. Are those sales tax we charge on water sewer and street stuff? I don't think so, or other expenditures?
What that is trustee Taylor, for example, um, the last dollar amount that we received in June, the two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-three, which by the way, um, just as a reminder, we receive sales tax two months in arrears. So this says June, which we did receive in August, okay? So what that shows is the breakdown of the two hundred and five thousand on how it is, um, what is it called, spread out to the different departments. In other words.
How that was allocated.
That's correct. Thank you.
So tho- those are the allocations
Yes, sir.
into the general water sewer streets. What does CC stand for? Please remind me.
Community Center and
Okay, got it. Yes, okay, yes.
Yeah, I had to say, ask the same question because where I came from, it was credit cards, so.
So I see the recommended increase in sales tax of six percent. Could you, could you remind me what that means from what sales tax to what sales tax?
What we would do is, um, from the 2020, the one million eight hundred and thirty-three, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, we would take that number and increase revenue by six percent.
Do, do, does that mean raising our, the sales tax that we charge by six percent? That's not what you're meaning. Oh, okay. Then I, I really need an explanation of that line, recommended increase in sales tax of six percent. What, what are you meaning by that?
Right. Okay, sales tax revenue would have been a good recommended, an increase in sales tax revenue. That's what.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay, that makes much more sense to me.
Okay, that's, that's good input. Thank you. Yes, so we're recommending six percent as of right now. Um, because obviously we're doing great.
Now, do, does, are you meaning by that, that we are expecting a six percent increase? Or we are going to raise our taxes?
We are expecting sales tax revenue that we are receiving to go up by six percent.
That I get. Alright, now I understand it. Thank you so much, Rita.
You're welcome.
That's all I've got.
Anybody else? If not, Miranda, would you move on to the next slide, please? So we did receive the preliminary evaluation for property taxes. Um, they are assessed every two years. And the current preliminary, preliminary assessed value is thirty-five million, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and six hundred and sixty-five, which is a nineteen point nine percent increase compared to the twenty twenty-one assessed value. The estimated revenue from property taxes for twenty twenty-two is estimated at six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. That's it for me. Any questions?
Okay, thanks Rita. Alright, so now what we want to talk about. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
I was processing before you, yeah, that last slide. Percentage change in property value, we really went up nineteen point nine percent.
Isn't that amazing? Yes, that's the increase that they're predicting, yes, which.
So much for affordable housing.
Uh huh, yes.
Confirm that, 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 that wasn't a typo, cuz that's.
Yeah, I know. We were surprised, we were surprised as well. So if you look at, um, the net property valuations from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, that's a big increase.
It is. I mean, there's a significant increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, but it's.
Not, not like that, though. I mean, this is, yeah, yeah, almost five, almost six million, actually.
Yeah, I, I, I look at a, I look at a move like that, and I wonder if that's a bubble or if that's going to be permanent.
I know.
In, in any case, in any case, it's, it's fine that we're going to be, uh, getting additional revenue as a result of this, whether it's per, you know, long-term or not, but it certainly does remind all of us, I hope, uh, of the importance of, of providing for affordable housing. I think, uh, mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer is absolutely right. This, this emphasizes the importance of working toward affordable housing in the area.
I agree. I just, I wanna point out that, that actually that's right on par for the reports that were in the, the studies that, uh, CSU and Boulder as well as multiple different realty departments had actually predicted for twenty twenty, um, and twenty twenty-two. So, uh, as much as it's shocking, it's, if you have kept up on the documentation and the studies for the demand and the increase in property value along the front range, they're right on par for what they had put in their reports back in two thousand and nineteen.
Right. So I worked for Sun Microsystems during the, uh, uh, dot com bubble. And our competitors did the right thing. They realized, ah, this is a temporary thing. We're not gonna scale up a lot. We're gonna turn away some sales and we're gonna survive. Sun said, hey, this is gonna go on forever, and they went under. And so I, I think that's a, for me, that's always a reminder that when we see an opportunity, let's take advantage of it, but let's not plan on it. Let's make sure we're also throttling back as necessary to assure that we're going to take advantage of this new opportunity. But if this opportunity goes away, we're prepared to deal with that. And I'm, I'm confident that town staff is thinking in those terms.
Agreed, and well said.
Okay, so now we just wanted to talk capital improvements, um, which kind of references back to, um, the CIP fund that Rita talked about, but these are just kind of larger scale projects, um, outside of maybe the normal budget that we're really looking at for twenty twenty-two. And so Dawn, I was just gonna briefly introduce this, but, but please jump in as I talk. The community center, so in twenty twenty-one, the Board of Trustees had budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars for the stone garage water and electricity connection. For twenty twenty-two, the community center is seeking funding for lighting replacement at the tune of thirteen thousand dollars. So we are, unfortunately, we have not been able to make, uh, a lot of the same movement we were hoping to on the stone garage. So what we're seeking to do is use the seventy-five hundred dollars for the stone garage to put towards lighting replacement, and then the community center does have a minor equipment budget, uh, with seven thousand dollars in it that could cover that, so we could do it this year. Um, of course, we'd need Board of Trustees approval to make that change of that seventy-five hundred for the stone garage. But what we'd like to do is make that transition this year so that the community center can deal with the lighting replacement, which is a more urgent need, and then still budget for the stone garage for next year because it is still a desire of ours to make that into usable space. Uh, but Dawn, do you want to add anything to that project that we're looking at?
I do. Um, so my argument for this, uh, transition of the funds is to take care of the facilities that are currently being used versus, um, prepare a facility with infrastructure when we don't have a direct use for it. We did have a direction, but right now that is sort of on hold while we seek direction on the grant, the proposed grant funds that, um, town is looking to use. If human services were to be redirected to a different spot, then it doesn't make sense to specifically prepare a building for them that they're not going to be using. So does that make any sense? And right now, the lighting replacement in both the gym and the multipurpose room is obsolete. It's old fluorescents. And we have been seeking to replace those with LED fixtures. So it's not just replacing the bulbs with LEDs. These two, um, those are, we typically use T eights, I believe those are T fives that are in the, um, ceilings of the multipurpose room, the community room in the gymnasium. And we need to replace the fixtures themselves. They are obsolete. The, the entire systems are obsolete. So, um, it's kind of like computers. By the time you get the lighting system in, there's something new on the horizon. But, um, it's possible that we could, particularly in the multipurpose room, replace those with, um, bulbless fixtures. So that would be a fantastic improvement and a great energy savings for the community center in the long run. Thank you.
So I have a question. I, I have to confess, I have not seen the stone garage. How big is the stone garage? Is that a fairly large machine, a large system or?
It was the bus garage for the, um, Netherlands School District. The old, is in the twenty twenties. It's right behind the building.
Right behind the building, okay.
Right, directly behind it. You've seen it, you just haven't noticed it because it's in fairly, you know, significant disrepair. I had come aboard several years back because we had an individual, um, who wanted to, we wanted to go into a public-private partnership for art, and I was redirected to, by the board to focus on services needs.
Oh, was that where the pottery studio was?
No, that was in the Mengele School, uh, schoolhouse, which I completely off the table to, um, update right now because it's completely in, where it sits.
Okay, got it. I mean, the, the, the interesting thing about the stone garage, i- i- if it held buses originally, uh, what, what is, what is hopeful about that is I noticed that we're looking to buy some electric vehicles, where, well, at least one, we're looking to purchase an electric vehicle. And while, uh, modern electric vehicles could remain outside through the entire season, through all the seasons, it is more efficient to have them in a room that doesn't get much colder than fifty degrees. And so the whole idea of having a garage that is at least partly temperature controlled and has electricity, that would be an ideal place to store our electric vehicles while they're not being used. So I'm, I'm kind of hopeful about the electric garage, or, or sorry, about the, the stone garage over the long term. As I say, I've heard it talked about, but I've never seen it. But if it held buses, that's wonderful. So I, I thi- I'm, I am hopeful about, um, outfitting the stone garage, and I would hope that we could eventually purpose it for our electric vehicles. But, um, I do understand what you're doing, and I understand the re, uh, the, uh, uh, repurposing of those funds for now. But, uh, yeah, I need to look at that stone garage and, uh, kind of get inspired by it.
Well, right now, it's not very inspirational. I was just, you know, taking a look, and it's a real mess. We got, um, we got some of the stuff moved out and filled one big roll-off, um, with old junk, and I need to get together with Public Works, and we need to probably fill another roll-off. And then that's why we want to wait because it's what to use it for is a longer discussion. Based on things that are not settled at the moment. So that, that's why the, the diversion of the funds to, um, to an immediate need.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm only now introducing this, this thought I had because it, I, apparently it's only been in my head until uh, I've spewed it out just now. But if we're going to hang of a small fleet of electric vehicles, it would be very nice to have a garage for them. And, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if that garage could be it, but I don't know. It's, uh, all open for discussion later.
Thank you.
With regards to that, just, I'm seeing a lighting replacement and, um, water and electricity connection. Knowing and having looked at that stone garage with Larry, who was, I believe Med PD is the last current use of that garage, um, there needs to be an allocation in there for uh, blocking on the roof essentially and insulating the roof. Otherwise, there will not be a climate control ability in that garage whatsoever, whether it is used for storage or anything else. So I would add, if possible, from the community center budget, at least, I'm gonna say at least five thousand, if not seven thousand for, um, climate control.
So that, that, um, figure was just to, um, basically for, um, to get the electricity in there and for Public Works to do in-house to get the, um, connections for the water ready to go.
Yeah, and I guess what got me, uh, interested in that was the idea that you're running water in there means you've gotta keep it above freezing. And if you're gonna do that, then you could store vehicles in there. But if, so yeah, if water's going in there, then uh, what, uh, what, uh, mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer said is, is absolutely correct. We certainly need to make sure that it is properly insulated. Doesn't need to stay warm, just above freezing, yeah.
Julian's correct. Currently, that stone garage has no blocking in between the, it's stone. All of it is stone on the walls, and then the roof is framed onto that stone. And there is no blocking, um, where the roof rafters come down. So there's no ability to actually insulate it or seal it off from the outside until there is some blocking and there, there is need if you're gonna run electricity and water in there to upgrade the structure of the building. So there needs to be at least five thousand in there if we're going to run water and electricity in there.
Right, and that, that was, so that's why we're asking to put that particular project on hold until there's a specific use that's been proposed and then gone through the proper processes um, to be determined what, how it's going to be used in the future. That's why right now, what we do have need for actually is lighting replacement. And knowing that the stone garage is a large project in and of itself, and there may be an opportunity for, uh, at some time to redevelop, for a larger site redevelopment, that, that goes on hold, um, for the time being.
So if I'm under, if I'm understanding, our capteal improvements are, um, including, uh, the, the budget is for thirteen thousand dollars. The seventy-five hundred dollars is there just kind of as a side note, just to say we were gonna do this, but we're not now.
Thanks for catching that capteal. I like it. It is, so I guess the question before the board is really, do you, I mean, I think Dawn brings up some great points of, we don't know what the future of the stone garage is. Normally, we would have just moved this seventy-five hundred as a CIP project in the future. Is, is perhaps that is more of a twenty twenty-three project and twenty twenty-two is dedicated to what does that site become? So we can plan accordingly and know financially what we would need. Is that? I mean, I'm looking to mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, kind of what you were maybe leaning towards is we need to determine all the factors that go into this building, not just water and electricity.
That's correct.
Well, I guess what I'm leaning toward is if you're gonna replace. Well, I guess what I'm leaning toward is if you're gonna replace the lighting, then you have an intended use for it. And based upon Town and Netherlands code, there is not much use that you can have without functional plumbing, just based upon our building codes. And if we're gonna put functional plumbing in there, then you need to upgrade the structure to a point where it can be climate-controlled enough to have functional plumbing.
All right, I, I need to um clarify something. The lighting replacement is not for the Stone Garage. There is no way.
That's for the, that's for the center.
It's for the community, the existing.
Then that makes a lot of sense, so, so.
For the community room and the gymnasium, yes.
Right, right. The Stone Garage is simply kind of a placeholder of if we have extra funding, throw it at it this year, but would be best off to push toward twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two.
And it sounds to me like, like Mayor Protan Baumhover is suggesting that we should add five thousand to that if we're gonna put water in there. Correct. So uh it, it, it certainly for other people who are going to see this document, I think it should be made clear that this has been, is being deferred. You know, that may be something to add to that line, to indicate that it's not part of our current budget and hasn't been thought through as thoroughly as we would like to. And so while it's interesting to have it there, I think we should add five thousand to that figure and then say, you know, this is deferred, this is not part of the twenty twenty-one budget.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I would agree with that, Julian. I think um the Stone Garage is probably gonna be finally upgraded depending on the use. And most likely, the use will be depending on who wants to rent it and make it something better.
Right, right. And, and the only thing that I, that, that comes to my mind is if we're going to have a fleet of electric vehicles, whether it's a large fleet or a small fleet, it would be nice to reserve some space in there for those vehicles for overnight uh operation. But that's all, for overnight storage. But that's just one idea, not a requirement. Excellent, thank you for that.
Thank you. So the next one is planning and zoning. Uh, I believe, I know a few months back, we had talked about Karen had mentioned in her staff report that we had identified mold and mushrooms in the annex, which is the small building that Cynthia operates out of in our planning and zoning department. Um, all the documents are in there. We had an industrial hygienist look at it and he provided a letter stating that unless treated, people should not occupy the space because if you potentially had a sensitivity to mold or mushrooms, um, it, it could exacerbate uh symptoms. So we need to remediate the annex. Because we are a government facility, we have to have us three different industrial hygienists to kind of occupy their own roles and provide that accountability and oversight for the treatment. So that's why I don't have a cost for you. But we're running out of space. We don't have room for people. So right now Cynthia has been more than accommodating in terms of working from home quite a bit. We share offices a ton where she shares, she shared with me when I was in my clerk office. She'll share with me in the admin role or with Rita. Um, but we need her back, obviously. She's one of the most sought-out people uh in terms of the role in which she plays. We just don't have a place for her to go. So uh this is definitely a capital improvement priority is to remediate that annex so she can move back into it. Uh, this would also require though probably a pod or something to move all of her files into. That, that office in the back, the jail area, is where every single property file in town exists. And so we do need to gut the, the annex in order to treat it. Um, so that is a priority and I'd love to know your feedback.
Yeah, that seems like something that really needs to be done, so, yes.
Great.
No concerns there.
Uh, I guess I would want to see the quotes for mold remediation prior to um budgeting to try to fix the problems with that small annex. I, I tend to look at that annex in Town Hall a lot uh when I'm eating breakfast at Ned's pretty much every weekend. And uh the, the roof on Town Hall, as well as the, the fascia and the flashing situation that's going on on both of those old buildings, is actually directing water directly into the attics and the dead space above your functional interior space. And it's not surprising that there is mold problems on both those buildings. And I guess my brain, from a construction perspective, is why would you spend money to remediate mold if the structure itself basically needs to be bulldozed? And so I guess my thought is, is it possible to potentially look at maybe taking that space that the annex currently sits on and rebuilding a more functional building and space to increase the space that town staff has, as well as provide better buildings? And while I'm saying that, uh, I would love if we could preserve the old jail cell. But since that's basically just concrete and a jail cell, I think we could basically bulldoze the building around it and rebuild a functional building holding on to that historical part of Netherlands. That, that's just kind of my few cents.
That's a really good thought, yeah.
We've actually talked about that and of course, you know, I think town staff, even tonight, we're proposing new positions. You know, well, obviously they'll probably grow over time and we have nowhere to go. And so I'm happy to, I can share with the board the current reports I have, Mayor Protan Baumhover, and so you can see what, what the industrial hygienist has shared. And really it is, it's kind of, you treat it or you start new. And so I'm definitely, I think we're all open to that conversation. Of course, I'm not a contractor, so I would be curious maybe if you could provide an assessment of what a new build might cost. Um, again, my remediation figure here was just kind of a shot in the dark from just talking to industrial hygienists um who gave me that approximation.
I guess I would have to come down and look at the bones of the annex. I'm familiar with Town Hall, having been involved in former remodels of Town Hall. And Town Hall is still salvageable. Um, we do need to address the roof situation on Town Hall at some point here. But if the annex is really the goal, you would have to assess kind of the, the framing and the foundation there and decide whether or not that's salvageable. But it also comes down to our setbacks in the area. And if we can gain more space by potentially remodeling or leveling the existing building and then trying to get some more space, I believe we could push back at least another ten feet toward the smoker-friendly. And that could provide, if you go back another ten feet, you go up, you know, ten feet, you make the annex two stories instead of the current one it is. It would match the roofline of Town Hall and Whistler's, so it wouldn't have that drastic of an effect on the, the sightline and kind of the visual aspect for folks. And I think it's worthwhile to potentially look at putting that twenty thousand toward a remodel. A remodel would most likely far more be in the range of fifty to seventy-five thousand for that building. This, depending on the foundation. But I have not looked at that annex in detail from a building perspective, only Town Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic input. And if we, i- i- if there's any hope that before we finalize the budget, we could see some estimates from uh various contractors, as well as from the hygienists, where we could compare the two options, that would be fantastic, I think.
Okay, yeah. We'll get that information. All right, the next one is body cameras and tasers for the police department. Obviously, we all know there is legislation requiring body cameras. We're looking into entering into a five-year agreement with Motorola that will provide us with seven body cameras. They are, the first year, the cost of the contract is forty-six hundred, and then every year after that, it's forty-two hundred. The reason we like Motorola is because at year three, they give us new cameras because the technology will become obsolete over time. And so um again, kind of the arrangement is if we stick with them, every two to three years, we get new equipment.
A lease arrangement.
Right, yeah, exactly. So, and so that's a part of the body cameras. And then tasers, our tasers, the cartridges we use are no longer uh being manufactured. So over time, we're gonna need to move to a new taser uh provider. And so they're doing some research on that. Um, but the thought is that that ten thousand could be split really fifty-fifty. Um, half our body cameras have to start to replace our tasers.
Do, do we have records on the last time that any of our officers used their taser?
I don't, but I'm happy to find out. I know it's not common.
I'll tell you what I'm, I'll tell you why I'm thinking about this. Tasers tend to be about fifty to sixty percent effective. Uh, they sometimes stop the person fifty-fifty, they don't stop the person. The key problem with the taser is if the taser hits and doesn't stop the person, they put the person into an extremely agitated mental state where they can't think clearly. And that's, that's the White, Ready and Kane study from twenty fourteen. But from twenty nineteen, it turns out that, that they often don't work. And when they don't work, the person who is agitated and confused becomes more violent and people have to get shot. And this is a common outcome. I mean, I know we haven't seen that here. But the taser as a method of de-escalating a problem has proved to be problematic in a number of ways, and there are numerous studies covering this. And I'm looking at our proposal to bring in psychological support for our police. And I'm almost wondering if we couldn't say, look, we don't need to de-escalate in this way with this fairly unreliable machine, especially since the newer tasers are lower voltage and are in fact less effective because of that lower voltage. So I'm wondering if we couldn't say, look, I mean, we would need to consult with our police, of course. But could we say we, we may not need tasers because we have psychological help when we're going into a situation like this? So I, I would like to explore that. I, I, I'm not disputing the number, I'm not disputing the costs here. But I think it would be very nice to have a conversation about can we use psychological intervention to de-escalate? And not tasers, because tasers haven't, uh, just because of the, I think, I think psychological intervention is more reliable than a taser. But it would require us to know from our police, when was the last time we used the taser? When were the cases where we thought, holy heavens, I could have come out of that much better if I'd used my taser? I mean, it would be nice to hear some information from our police department regarding the effectiveness of the tasers that we use and a discussion of whether we could forego tasers in, in lieu, in, and instead use psychological support, which we're looking at doing actively, which is wonderful. So I, anyway, that's just, that's just a thought I was having when I saw the tasers mentioned there.
Yeah, and Marshall Johns, unfortunately he's not a call, otherwise he'd jump on, but I, I can ask him.
Absolutely.
For that.
I know we don't have the people here.
Yeah, follow up with you, but I think it's a great point.
Wonderful.
Definitely.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we use our tasers all the time, that's completely, then I'm completely wrong. But if the last time we used a taser was six months ago, I'm thinking, now that's fantastic. We have peace officers who are, are very definitely concerned about de-escalating situations rather than shooting people. Could it be that our goal of moving toward having psychological support with our police when the situation requires it, could that mean we don't need tasers? I, I, it's just, just something I think what I would like to discuss.
Yeah, definitely. Just leaving the floor up for Mayor Protan Baumhover, since it's just the two of you.
I love what Julian's saying, I guess. Um, I know the body cameras are required as part of the uh, you know, um, defunding the police and all the, the top-down kind of requirements that have been placed on our police department, as well as police departments across the country. I'm curious about if tasers are part of that legislation as well, um, which then means it's unfortunately outside of our control whether or not our police officers ever use it. Mostly because of the legislation that was passed.
But actually, no, the legislation just speaks to body cameras. And, and then obviously all the support systems that go with redacting and storage.
Yeah.
But it's only body cameras.
Tasers came out, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. Most, most people, our police officers, might use a taser against, would probably just piss them off more than it would help.
And, and in fact, that is what sometimes happens. It's just, just a matter of um, the taser came out as a non-lethal uh approach. And it's wonderful that that came out. It was, it was a, it was a great idea. We have a lot of experience with the taser now, from twenty eleven up through now. And that ten years of experience has told us that there are some advantages to a taser. Most police departments are saying eh, fifty percent effective. And that means if you're too far away or you're too close, it doesn't work. Yes, it just pisses them.
They're also against the law to use on a fleeing victim, so a lot of the time, they're just not functional.
Absolutely. And so it would be fascinating to hear our creative and uh peace-oriented police department um considering this issue. And, and who knows, we, we may find that, that the tasers aren't something we need and we're going to replace them with something that's more effective. Again, discussion would be very nice.
Yeah, we'll get the information for the next go-around. Okay, visitor center, um, it gets hot in there. It gets upwards to ninety, ninety-five degrees in the summer. Um, and they have a fan, but it just is circulating hot air. And so we would like to look into installing some sort of air conditioning system. Uh, but because the visitor center plays a very large role in driving tourists to businesses in the DDA district, we are actually gonna seek assistance from them with this expense. But of course, I'd love to know your feedback.
I would love to see the cost for a swamp cooler versus air conditioning. Air conditioning is really based upon, you know, electric, whereas we, swamp coolers are pretty effectively used in this climate. Um, would most likely have a far less cost to it and um also would work in, well, wouldn't work without power outage. But I would love to see a, a cost analysis on an air conditioning system versus simply a swamp cooler, which tends to be a little bit more environmentally sustainable and uh less draw on electrical and the grid, which is also part of our comprehensive plan and desires.
It, that, that's excellent. Considering the uh humidity in this area, I think a swamp cooler would be an excellent uh consideration.
Okay, great, thanks. So our Public Works team, unfortunately, they're, they're exhausted. They're bathing big springs, if you all haven't seen, it's very exciting. And so I am going to represent their capital improvement project priorities. I have quite a bit of information on these, um, but there, these may be items we do need to follow up on. But first is Public Works. Um, obviously, we want to finish the master infrastructure plan. Uh, the last one, I believe, was done in two thousand thirteen, so we're coming up on that time to, to redo it. Uh, we have the old shop well construction. So this is a requirement for phase two of the Old Town Shop. We do need to do the wells in order to test for what contaminants are there. And so it's a large part of remediating the Old Town Shop area. And then the last one is the electric vehicle. Um, Chris does have a desire to purchase an electric truck for Public Works. He actually has a really interesting reader device that's currently hooked up to one of his trucks that assesses how the vehicle is used. And the data from that will give him a recommendation on what type of vehicle is most appropriate for their needs. And so we do plan to seek some grant funding for this expense, uh, but that vehicle is kind of listed out of what the costs could be. So that's Public Works, question?
And that's, that's excellent. I, I, I do have a, um, so my experience with an electric vehicle is that it's very inexpensive to operate. It is very inexpensive to fuel, but that when the temperature gets down below thirty-two degrees, the battery will tend to not yield. Uh, so we can charge our car to eighty percent, drive some, we did this once. We, so I, I'm giving you anecdotal information, but I think is probably consistent with every, with all other electric vehicles that use a lithium-ion battery. So we uh drove to uh Fort Collins, where we often go. We, there's a hotel we like to stay. And we did this at Thanksgiving two years ago with our Tesla Model Three. We had eighty percent charge. We got there, we had about seventy percent charge. And as soon as the temperature dropped to one degree, zero degrees or less, it was, it was below zero degrees that Thanksgiving in Fort Collins. And uh when that happened, our battery dropped to fifty percent. And, uh, when that happened, our battery dropped to fifty percent, just instantly dropped to fifty percent. Now, everything worked. We had no problems at all. We got home. Um, the, the car was complaining, the battery was too cold and nothing was going to work. Everything worked. So that wasn't the problem. But it is clear that we lost twenty percent of our charge because it was so amazingly cold. And so it is useful to consider that if you're going to be using an electric vehicle throughout the year, when it's going to go sub-zero, you probably want, when you don't, when you're not using that vehicle, to keep the vehicle in uh, an area that doesn't go below thirty-two degrees. And that's why I was thinking about the stone garage as a possible way of doing that. If it goes below thirty-two degrees, uh, the car, it doesn't fall apart, doesn't fail. It's just you've lost twenty percent of your charge. And so it's an important point to consider if we get an electric vehicle, we may want to consider where we're going to store that vehicle when it's not being used so that the energy we've put into it doesn't get lost because it gets fantastically cold. So just, just a point to bring up.
Yeah, great feedback. Thank you for that. I'll have to ask Chris if that's been assessed.
He, he hasn't taken a drive in the Model Three. I'll be glad to give him a drive.
He needs to. All right, that's a requirement here before we move forward.
But that is, that is one of the, that is one of the minor issues that we encountered. The battery didn't go dead. It just magically dropped to fifty percent and kind of stuck there. But it was deadly cold when that happened, so it's not something you're going to see every day.
Well, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Julian, because I mean, I, I don't have experience with electric vehicles, but I do use a lot of battery-powered tools and, uh, any lithium ion battery, any lithium-based battery that is a very common occurrence with when I'm trying to use my battery-powered tools during winter time. Uh, they will drop to fifty percent even if they're at full charge and they will drain probably fifty to sixty percent faster than they would in above freezing, freezing conditions and under freezing conditions or even at, you know, thirty-two degrees. So that's a good consideration. The other consideration would be the use of this electric vehicle, the intended use and, um, kind of purposing it for being kind of the drive-around car. I know Chris is still currently driving that old, you know, Ranger, the, the six-banger that's really old and he has kind of taken as his vehicle because he knows that it is less useful than a lot of the, the newer turbocharged that we have. Um, electric vehicles don't tend to do as good under load or hauling or towing. Well, I wouldn't say they do as good, but they don't tend to meet their specs. So their, their batteries will drain quicker towing a trailer or hauling load. So if we're going to get an electric vehicle for public works, we should specify that to kind of being the, the vehicle that is driven to look at meters, assess situations, or for the employees to be using to get from point A to point B for meetings. And not necessarily one of our public work vehicles that is hauling, you know, pipes and plumbing and compressors and tools, but.
Okay.
And one could also, one could also select the vehicle based upon that, that function. So it is true that if you're using a six-cylinder engine, uh, the vast majority of your fuel is being dedicated to keeping that engine really, really hot. And so you don't notice when you're going up a hill or down a hill because most of the fuel is being thrown into keeping the engine hot. With an electric vehicle, it is absolutely true. Jonathan is absolutely correct. That going up a hill, you can watch the meter as it says, oh, you're using a lot of energy now. And then going down a hill, you can watch the meter and it says, oh, we're recharging the batteries now. You do pay much more attention to, uh, you, you do notice when you're driving into the wind. It, it doesn't turn out to be a major problem, but you do notice it more because the car is so much more energy efficient than a vehicle with an internal combustion engine. But I wager we would find that companies like Rivian are designing their vehicles to tow. And I wager that we will find that, uh, especially as the technology improves, but even now we find that, uh, just with our Model Three going, uh, up hills or going down, going up hills, we do notice we use a lot of energy, but it's, it's not, it's not as much as you would expect. So I think some research may yield a specific brand of vehicle that may even support towing and the kinds of things that, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Baumhofer is talking about. So yeah, all this is very cool, very exciting, and, uh, I look forward to, to seeing what we consider. But I also, uh, need to remind Chris that he, uh, has a, a ride in the, in the Tesla if he wants it.
I'm gonna add it, add it to the list here. Okay. And I do think the report that he gets from this reader that's installed in his vehicle will definitely help and, and it would be a cool thing to share with the board when we get those results. So more to come. Okay, utilities for sewer. So we have the INI repairs. So in essence, what's happening is we've been lining the clay pipes to lower the impact uh, for the infiltration on the groundwater into our system. Um, that's already been in place and we just want to keep moving forward with that. The other two for grease interceptor policy and industrial pre-treatment policy. What we're looking to do there is actually codify how businesses handle grease. Um, currently they're, we kind of just try to work with businesses and that doesn't always work well. Um, there's not a lot of uh, impact that are, because we don't have it in code about how we handle grease. And of course, if, if restaurants are mishandling their grease and not hauling it appropriately, it has a huge impact on our system. So here we're looking for JVA to assist us with drafting and ordinance on how, um, grease is handled from businesses and that industrial pre-treatment is more specific to breweries and how they handle their specific processes. Again, it's really focused on lowering the impact on the sewer system. Grit removal, we've talked to you about before. We're obviously pursuing that using a combination of PIF reserves, American Rescue Funds, uh, the, the general CIP and then a DOLA match. So we've already talked about that. And then manhole similar, also trying to line and repair manholes. And that's what that cost is. Questions on these ones?
I guess, uh, just on the INI repairs, is ten thousand just what we feel we will be able to accomplish in the next year? Um, it, it seems like the, the INI repairs on our sewer system is a top priority, or at least has been discussed as a top priority as we are starting to kind of run into that, um, I guess that cap during our high water season of when we'll need to upgrade our sewer treatment plant. And it has nothing to do with the sewer treatment's plant's capacity in terms of house, housing and development, but more so the cap during high water. And even if we only hit that inflow cap for maybe two weeks, we'll, we're still forced to upgrade our treatment plant. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's the potential to increase that budget number or if ten thousand is simply what we'll be able to accomplish in our window based upon our contractors.
So I don't have the budget open. I'm actually Rita. If, if I'm correct, was it that ten thousand dollars was kind of a continuously budgeted item on CIP over multiple years? Is that correct? If I recall that spreadsheet correctly? I, I think Mayor Pro Tim, of course, uh, speaking for Chris and knowing where Chris's head is always at. If you, the board wants to put more money towards that, they will take more money. And it's obviously something too that they could even contract out if it became a personnel problem. Um, but of course they would always take more funds to do these repairs faster.
Well, I guess, yeah, there's only myself and Julian here, but I would love to see that upwards of fifty thousand for this next budget year. I'd love to see us really throw a lot of money at the INI repairs and really stop the inflow of groundwater into our sewage treatment system so that we can have an accurate reading on what the actual sewage inflow is from houses and businesses coming into our wastewater treatment plant and not muddied by groundwater infiltration.
This is Rita. Sorry, I was on mute. I was talking and nobody heard me. So yes, it is an ongoing, um, item on the CIP schedule. Um, and actually it is funny because, you know, they, they projected it over through twenty twenty-four over several years. And I do see that it actually says for twenty twenty-two, as it was done in the past, it's less than fifty grand. So I don't know why Chris is putting what his thoughts are when he's just putting ten thousand dollars there. So.
I think Chris obviously operates on a place where he knows there's tons of projects and, and he needs to think accordingly. Of course, I will say in speaking for Chris, and I feel confident that he, if this was prioritized and the board trustees felt that way, he would of course appreciate that and it would allow us to do exactly what you're saying, Mayor Pro Tim Baumhofer is, address this concern, which is having quite an impact on our, on our wastewater facility.
You could put the taser budget into that.
There we go.
I would love it. Yeah. If we could just put a note for future discussions, maybe let's try to up that to fifty thousand this year. And let's see if we can really put more of a knock in. And I know that, um, the mayor, Chris Larson, has mentioned he would love to see more of a priority on that because, you know, looking forward, it's going to save us a lot of money.
Absolutely. Great. Trustee Taylor, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't even know what INI stands for, but I agree with everything Mayor Pro Tim Baumhofer said.
I was like, I don't, it, I, Mayor Pro Tim Baumhofer, I don't even know what it, I just call it INI all the time.
It, uh, stands for infiltration and inflow. So it's essentially groundwater. We have clay pipes that are our entire sewage system and they tend to be cast clay pipes that are either twelve to sixteen foot long. And well, when they were placed, they were placed tight, but due to kind of expansion contraction and just settling, they, those clay pipes tend to separate whether through, um, settling and as being sixteen-foot clay pipes that are circle, as soon as one of those pipes settles an inch, you get a quarter inch gap to an inch gap, either top, bottom on one of the sides, depending on how they settle. So we basically go in there and we fill those gaps with clay, but as long as those gaps are open, our groundwater tends to come in and up here, especially through where our sewage system is, our groundwater tends to sit between six to eight feet. And so during spring, we have a massive amount of groundwater that actually infiltrates our sewage systems.
And we're processing groundwater in the sewage system.
Correct. And we have, yeah, we're, we're chlorinating it and then it comes in into our data in terms of what the sewage system is processing. And it actually tells us that we have to upgrade our sewer plant in two years when realistically, if we could fix our sewage system, we wouldn't have to upgrade our sewage facility for at least another ten, even with all the projected inflow and development. So it's kind of something we really need to address. Otherwise, we'll be forced through state standards and mandates to upgrade our sewage facility simply because from pretty much May through July, we take on massive amounts of groundwater.
Got it. That, that does seem like something where, uh, the investment is going to pay off in the long run. Absolutely.
Okay. So then for water, um, kind of some similar things. So when it comes to raw water, what we're looking to do is line the retention ponds so that we're not losing water into the ground. Um, looking to do PIF reserves for that expense. There is a generator, it's called a Caribou generator. It's just really old and inefficient, uh, that we get lots of complaints about it. And so the desire is to replace that, uh, for a more efficient one. There is a hydrant on Lakeview that is inoperable. I'm happy to report there is a hydrant very close by that is operable, but of course we want to replace that hydrant to make sure it's working effectively. And then for the trepidometer, what this is, is in essence, it is a, a system that would tell us how many small particles are in the water. And that's important for us to know to determine what's being sent out in distribution. So this replacement is more efficient, more operator friendly and would also help us with our reporting. So those are their CIP goals. Questions about water?
So I have a quick question about the Caribou generator. Is that an electrical generator? Or is that something else?
That's a great question, and I don't know unfortunately the answer to that.
I believe all of our town generators are diesel.
So it's a diesel, uh, generator that generates electricity?
That's my understanding, but Chris would have to answer that.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm curious what, what, so if it, yeah, I would kind of be curious if it generates electricity, what it's powering. That would be kind of interesting to know. But, um, yeah, if we don't, if we're, if we need, uh, Chris here to answer that question, then uh, I'm not, uh, I'm not desperate to know the answer. It's just, that's interesting. We have a, we have a generator on Caribou. Okay, cool.
I guess I have the same question as Julian of where is this generator and what is it powering? Because most of Caribou is not town property. My guess is it's probably attached to the fire station and is probably a backup generator for the fire station, similar to the diesel generator that backs up the community center to keep. Um, you know, I guess.
Right, that would make sense.
So I would love to see more information on that, just as well as, as trustee Taylor has said, because I'm curious. What is that powering and why do we need a generator on Caribou?
And let me just make a note, if Mayor Pro Tim Baumhofer's, uh, guess is correct, it would be cheaper to install batteries.
I agree.
Uh, let's, I mean, let's see how much, how many watt hours are required, but hey, it would be cheaper now to install batteries than a diesel generator.
I agree with that, and I think former BOT members, particularly Kevin Mueller, would love to see that happen.
Hey, I'll get that information.
I find out it's not actually generating electricity, it's generating something else, some, some nefarious weird. It's, it's processing uranium or something. We don't know what it is. But if it's really a generator, then yes.
Just got the heads up, that might actually be the generator up on Caribou Ridge that's attached to the town facility up there. I'm not sure what that actually powers, but it would be nice to have more details than Caribou generator specifically. What is it powering and why do we need it?
Yeah, if we, if we knew the watt hour requirements for that generator, then we could certainly assess whether that needed to be a diesel generator or it could easily be lithium ion batteries. Or if we're going to wait a year, if we don't actually get around to this, we may be using much less expensive iron air batteries. But anyway, all of that should, yeah, let's find out what that is. That could be cool.
I am going to just send a few messages out to see if I can get some of these answered tonight. So when we get to Q and A at the end, maybe we could circle back to a few of these.
Thanks, Miranda.
Yeah, technology, it's so great. Okay.
No other questions about this. That all looks good to me, except for the Caribou generator.
Yep, we'll get that info. So now I want to talk people, personnel. Um, I want to offer a little bit of a caveat here that this is what is budgeted. Um, we definitely have staff missing from certain departments and of course it's a roll-up. Um, so as you see, when it comes to administration, normally we break out clerk and planning and zoning, but here we have not. But just in general, so you can see kind of the breakdown of how much we pay personnel in, in each of these departments. Are there any kind of initial questions about this slide or anything you'd like me to dive into a little bit more here?
I don't have any questions, but I, I would like to say how pleased I am that we actually have a resolution uh, to support living wage, because I think that's crucial and I think that's a very proper and honorable goal for a town to hold. So I was very pleased to see that resolution.
Yeah. So I think a, a part of why I brought that resolution forward, and maybe I'm jumping ahead of myself, is forty thousand dollars is not necessarily a livable wage anymore. And so I provided these, you know, the cost of living indexes, if the average is a hundred, Boulder County is at one forty-one. And you're looking at cost, you know, the cost of a one bedroom is maybe fifteen hundred dollars. So when you have staff who are only bringing in, say, eleven to twelve hundred dollars a paycheck, you know, we're looking at the large portion of their pay going to. you know, we're looking at the large portion of their pay going to just their their standard living expenses. So what I'm asking of the board is potentially using uh the fun money in the fun balance or wherever that may come from to do a a pay rate study uh to specifically look at, are we paying appropriately? Are we competitive, of course? Um, and is it possible that we need to maybe over the next ten years start to increase that where the minimum pay for an employee is fifty thousand? And again, these are just numbers I'm throwing out. But uh I'm not sure the last time Netherlands did a compensation study, and I think that there is some benefit in completing that assessment. And so of course, would love to hear your feedback on that.
I I agree that a compensation study would make really good sense now. And it would be helpful if we could compare the results of that compensation study with s- any previous compensation study, if we could find that. If we can't, then I'm sure that Rita would be able to put together some kind of numbers that would help us understand if the increase in compensation is is consistent with, for example, uh the federal cost of living. Or if there is some other measure we might be able to use to determine over, say, ten years, how that compensation should change with changes in the cost of living or the cost of just being here, which may not be consistent with the federal cost of living. So my feeling would be that this is an important study. I I would certainly like to see this study. And I would like to look into the possibility of updating our ordinances as needed. Or or I said, I don't know if they're, if this is guided by ordinance or is guided by some other policy wherein we could have annual adjustments based upon economic information we uh that that is readily available to us, so that we don't have to do a study again for, you know, a fair amount of time. And we can be fairly confident that based upon information readily available each year, we could make adjustments in each everybody's salaries. So I would like to consider that if that's not something we already do.
Yeah, so when, at the end of the year, we do do a cost of living increase. Um, typically, it averages probably anywhere from two to three percent. Am I right, Rita? And that's kind of just been the historic.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
You know, I I do think there's benefits in in taking a look at that kind of on a different scale of what are the factors that would determine cost of living um versus maybe just a blanket number. Uh, so and and when it comes to the compensation study, you know, Lyons is currently doing one, Central City recently did one. So we do have neighbors who have started to work on it.
Right.
Um, so I'm interested to see what they have. And the Colorado Municipal League, of course, has one. I I, you know, I think that there are a few reasons why we struggle when it comes to personnel. And and of course, it's not always money, but I think it's important to rule out the financial component of that. And if there are other reasons for turnover, we address those separately.
It would be interesting to find, and again, this might be a challenge for Rita to uh determine if the cost of, if if the cost of living as specified is a useful guide, or if there is perhaps some other economic guide that may help us to keep up to date without having to do compensation studies too often. So I think that might be an interesting, an interesting thing to review.
Absolutely.
I guess my input here is I would agree with everything uh trustee Taylor has said. I struggle with this one. I am all about the paying town staff, you know, a living wage up here. But I guess where I struggle with it comes into skill sets and um those that are making a living wage, having the skill sets necessary to be earning that wage. And that at times, we may just be I I I don't know that this happens. I guess this is just in my head, running through a scenario that if we got caught in a situation where we're simply hiring folks because we need, I hate to say this, but warm bodies. And we are then paying them a living wage when they don't actually have the skill sets necessary to perform the job requirements for that living wage. So I like the idea of a compensation study. I do think we have a, you know, annual increase based upon inflation and increase in cost of living that is incorporated every year. But I guess I would like us to find a way to incorporate skill sets into this wage to make sure that not only are we paying our public works and our town staff a living wage, but that those individuals we hire also have the skill sets to be earning that wage, so that we're, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I'm actually glad you brought that up, because what my desire is, is to do uh this classification and compensation plan, which really operates, of course, on merit, length of time, you know, that skill component, you know, it really takes into consideration, you know, who we're hiring and gives them an idea of like where they could go within their salary range. Um, but it's not just kind of this flat, you came to town, you make fifty thousand. It is uh comparable to the role in which they are occupying. And so maybe that's where, you know, someone comes in and they hold a class A C D L, you know, that's not necessarily common. And so being able to provide compensation based on what skills someone may be bringing and or acquiring in their time here.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I think that would be huge, because I think there are certain folks that we hire that actually have classifications and skill sets and, you know, that we should be able to compensate them more than potentially somebody else that didn't have those that could still qualify for the job. And that uh recognizing the skill sets of those folks that we do currently employ and compensating them for that will help with our retention as well as employee satisfaction.
I think it helps to just kind of standardize that. And of course, every employee needs to be treated independently. But giving them an idea of like, if you go for these certifications or you you acquire this, here's the possible financial compensation route that you can go. And and it may drive employees to want to stay, to grow with us, to gain the skills and not gain the certifications, like in, say, water wastewater and then leave. That's what we're seeing. Maybe try to get away from being the stepping stone to the next municipality.
I love it.
Absolutely. That's that's wonderful. And that's that's a wonderful goal, Miranda. And um the I, you know, my belief is that anyone working forty hours a week should take home a living wage. And it's our responsibility, meaning yours, I'm not going to take the responsibility, I'm just this guy. But Miranda, your responsibility uh to make sure that their work is bringing, is bringing true value. And that's what the supervisor has to do. And um so we make sure that we, we don't hire people just to fill space. We make absolutely sure we hire people to do a particular thing. And then the supervisor assures that that particular thing is being done appropriately and correctly. And they've earned their, uh they've earned their living and we get the value. So yes, absolutely.
So I think what we do then from here at future board meetings, of course, is bring back kind of an R F P process, because we need to find out what the cost is of of vendors who would do that. So um do that cost analysis and then provide this to the board at a later time. But the goal, of course, would be to implement that classification and compensation plan for twenty twenty three. And so spending the next year dedicating time and resources to that.
And and that seems fair.
All right, so now talking new people. So the point of this next section is, you know, there are different jobs we could pursue. And it's not saying we're pursuing them tomorrow. We'd like to just get your thoughts on these four positions. And this is by no means an exhaustive list, um just some that have been floating around of of how do you prioritize these? And and are there others we're not considering? So the first is the coresponder. We brought this before you um previously. And Janine is on to answer any questions you may have. But of course, this is the mental health professional who and behavioral specialist who will team up with law enforcement and and make sure that we're providing kind of more of that case management comprehensive support to people who are struggling um and definitely their time of need. And so when we brought this before the board, the ask was, would the sheriff split the cost? Unfortunately, they can't. Uh, we aren't, we still are covered under this program, which is great. But we are looking at, is there a possibility for town to bring this position on? So I'm just going to run through these four really quick and then we can kind of jump back. The next is a grants manager. Um, there is a power presentation put together by Jennifer Walts, who is supporting us with the community revitalization grant. She helped with the reporting system for the police department. So she just wanted to educate the board on what a grant writer could do for us. Um, so of course, the person prepares, executes, follows up, tracks, um kind of handles grants in their entirety. I think our team has, Chris Palatier, big shout out to him, of course, he's done a ton of work to secure grants. And our team adds on this grant writing position as just kind of a side gig on top of everything else. And and I've done an amazing job securing that funding. Um, but I think the question before the board is, if could a potential grant writer who's a part of our team help us to maximize those resources? And then I think the other thing of that presentation is, you know, there is that culture perception that we kind of just go for grants just to go and which what a grant writer could do is really figure out our priorities and then try to match grants accordingly versus this kind of last minute, oh, this is great funding, I only have a couple of weeks to apply. Um, would have more of that, that long term, bigger vision of how we could fund these projects. The next is a parks manager. This is a big goal, a pro sab. Um, so bringing on someone who not only oversees our parks and trails, but actually could oversee recreational facilities. And a part of our discussion is, could this person, could we bring Ned Rink, mountain tennis and pickleball back in house to be managed by town? And that this parks manager would support in that role, um could be a contract in the future, whatever that might be. But they really take care of recreational facilities. If we were to do that and take on Ned Rink and tennis and pickleball, we, of course, would then take on their revenue streams. And that could be one way in which this position could be fulfilled. And it would allow to have a parks manager as its own independent part of the budget versus kind of a line item currently in public works. And the last one is a sustainability coordinator. We are running on our last year of funding for the match for Garrett's time. So I do think it's it's time for the board to assess the value of that position and bringing it in uh as a full time or or a part time position. And so I have provided average salary ranges. That's just doing some research amongst Colorado municipalities. Can't necessarily get safe or certain that those are what you'd land on, um but just some figures to think about. So between those four or maybe some others, are there ones that you're interested in?
So I I looked over several of the resumes, Miranda, and uh I noticed two interesting things. One was that for one of the towns, the salary grade was grade two hundred ten. So I'm wondering, what were the previous two hundred nine salary grades? That must be a really fine uh that, yeah, that's just amazing to me. Nevertheless, I was just, I just noticed that offhand.
I did not pull each salary grade, and I did a broader.
Sure. So they must have more than two hundred ten salary grades, probably. Wow, that's amazing. Anyway, um, so I was curious about. Oh, I wanted to quickly ask the question. We don't require a drug test, do we?
We do for our public works department if they have C D Ls or doing any sort of driving. So that's a Department of Transportation requirement uh for them to be drug tested upon hire. And then, of course, there's there's the accident hiring drug test.
Okay, I that's, that's, that's unfortunate, but if it's a requirement, that's.
Yeah, it's just certain, and that's just you, that's just public works, but it's going to really depend on your your type.
I mean, I think, I think, I think the pre-employment drug screening kind of introduces a contra uh uh a uh a relationship of opposition uh between the employer and the employee, and it serves no purpose. But I got it. That's a rule. Okay, got it. So I'm looking at the grants manager. I think, I think you know that that I find the Boulder County coresponder role to be a very, very important one. And I think it's, it would be an especially important one if it means we don't need tasers. I think that would be very cool. Uh, and so I I would be considering that one very seriously. I think it's an important role. And I think it's an important way of putting the peace officer in the role that the peace officer should be playing while allowing uh experts in psychology to be handling their roles. So I'm very hopeful about the Boulder County coresponder. So that's definitely one that I'm taking very seriously. For the grants manager, I read the presentation, and I I didn't come away with an answer to this question. What do we estimate? Do we have any idea here? What do we estimate will be our increased grant income by doing this? It certainly has to be sixty five thousand dollars more, at least, in grants. So what what are we, what are we kind of imagining might be our increased grant income? Certainly, one of the things you brought up is important. Uh, the thing about the uh refurbishing of the east wing of the uh community center, uh, you know, we discovered that grant a little late. We're rushing now. Uh, and you're, you you make a very good point that that is less likely to happen if we have a grants manager. But now to just, now I'm going to stop talking unless you answer. What are we thinking we might gain?
In my research and talking with Jennifer with the grants, I think that's a little hard question, because what a grants manager does, of course, is seek out grants that match our projects versus creating projects to match the grants. And so I think it's, one of the first things the grant manager would do would be to sit down and figure out what it is that we need to fund. And so, for example, just maybe looking at all of our C I P projects, if we are going to fund all of those through grants, I mean, we're looking at half a million dollars in grants. Um, and that's just an example, and that's what would you be looking at is knowing that we need to line our raw water, you know, all those ponds, and that cost is just shy of two hundred thousand dollars and seeking out the funding for those projects, because she knows it's a priority. So the comprehensive plan would be a big part of that. But I would say, you know, definitely more than the salary, easily over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus. And and then you've got those big one million dollar ones that come around. Um, but you know, for large road infrastructure, we know that improving our roads is a priority. And so this grants manager would then just kind of scour opportunities to meet that need. And I think that would help us with grants, is to stop chasing the grant and have the grant match us.
So it's on the, on the plus side, what it means is if the grants manager is capable of doing what staff suspects the grants manager will be able to do, the grants manager will at least bring in the grants manager's salary through grants.
Yes.
That means that this is something we can consider outside of the other positions we are considering. Uh, because the grants manager would essentially, if all works well, uh pay for himself.
When I think the grants manager, like when you contract with one, I think the challenge is you can often write into a grant to cover that project management. But no grants manager contractually is going to say, okay, that's fine, just pay me when you get awarded. Whereas having them on salary, you know, then you can still apply and integrate the cost to cover that person's time. But of course, that person gets the steady paycheck to still do their job.
Of course, and that's an incentive to to focus, focus, focus and do a really good job.
Yep.
Good, good. All right. And I think we've seen significant value from our sustainability coordinator. We we've certainly found one who seems very competent and um it would be a shame to to lose him. But of course, if we were to open a position for a sustainability coordinator, we would still have to open that to other resumes. But i- you know, if we find someone as good as Garrett, I think we're, I think that's, I think that's a I think that's a good idea. Um, so I feel good about the sustainability coordinator. So if I were to look at all three, I'd say the grants manager maybe pays for himself. And so maybe I don't have to think about that as hard. I think the sustainability coordinator is a position worth filling. And in my view, the Boulder County coresponder is a position worth filling. And I'm suspecting, I'm suspecting that Mayor Pro Tan Bomb Hover is going to disagree with me on the parks manager.
You know me very well, Julian. I guess my thoughts here are um, I agree one hundred percent that the coresponder, I think there's been a lot of discussion about that. And that would be a very big benefit to this community. In terms of looking at a grants manager, I guess my thought is, three years sitting on this board, so often, a lot of the flack we take from public is not having discussion item. is not having discussion items before action items. And the only time that has ever happened is when we have a grant before us that is a good opportunity for folks to go at. And I also happen to know that a lot of our department heads spend a large amount of their time chasing down or writing grants to keep their budgets afloat and to go after capital improvement projects. And the amount of work and kind of tightening up a lot of the processes that happen on a department level could be greatly benefited by having a grants manager. While I 100% agree that Garrett has done an exceptional job as our sustainability coordinator of kind of chasing down various things, I question the benefit to the entire community of the projects that the sustainability coordinator and that, that kind of goal goes at, not necessarily the ideological benefit as well as the benefit to our comprehensive plan, our master plan. But I look kind of at a zero bottom line of, from a utilitarian perspective and philosophy, how much is every citizen in the town of Nederland benefiting from having a sustainability coordinator that writes grants to make Ned Fest and Frozen Dead Guy Days zero waste? Versus how much could the entire town of Nederland benefit from having a parks and recs manager that can actually be the go-between, between Ned Rink, Ned Skate, our parks and our Pocket Parks? We have 20 Pocket Parks that are unknown and unused. Ned Rink is currently a nonprofit split between the Ned Rink and the Ned Tennis. Ned Skate still belongs to a nonprofit. And we have a multimillion dollar skate park falling into a state of disrepair that is actually, when you look at the reviews for it, one of the premier skate parks in the entire Rocky Mountains. Were held up to the same standards and people love the Netherlands Skate Park. But as a town, we don't maintain it. And the nonprofit and Ned Skate as an organization has largely kind of fallen by the wayside. Whether it's through the individuals that had volunteered kids no longer skating or just personal life and health problems stopping them. So I guess my perspective on the Parks and Rec is we have at least three facilities that currently were built by grant funding, GOCO grants and housed under nonprofit organizations that now for one reason or another cannot continue to maintain those while they're through funding, management, or lack of staffing. And we are kind of letting multimillion dollar facilities fall into a state of disrepair. And as a town, there's been requests that we take on and take those facilities back over. And I guess when I look at a sustainability coordinator who might be writing grants or helping to facilitate sustainability goals of net zero or zero waste, those are goals that we have to work toward. Whereas these are facilities that we are currently built and are falling into states of disrepair. And in our comprehensive plan, it says, make more with less, do more with less and protect and preserve what we have. So I would prioritize the Parks and, you know, a Parks Director well above a sustainability coordinator because the sustainability coordinator is simply going to be helping us further our sustainability goals, which we have been making good grounds on. And that is not anything against Garrett or our sustainability board. It's simply looking at a zero kind of cost analysis and a zero baseline of, this is what we have currently that is falling into a state of disrepair and we're losing value in that. So let's spend our money to maintain that value and maintain those facilities we have versus spending money for a position that creates more of a burden on town budget and more of a burden on town ordinance and town hall staff to enforce.
Okay, I'm persuaded.
With that, I guess I would, I would like, we're all town staff members or board members here. And there is one member of the public on listening tonight who I believe is involved in Ned Rink. So this would be one I would like it to open up to public comment. If Scott, you have anything to say with regards to this?
Thank you. And I do like everything you've said. And I'm really here to stand by to see if you guys really want to step forward with that parks manager. Currently running the rink, have run the rink for the last three years and been involved for many years before that. And just wanted to see it continued being successful and anything I can do to keep that happening.
Thanks, Scott. I guess, so my perspective, I would love to see all four. I 100% agree with Julian. I think top priority in these positions should be the co-responder. Our police force has to deal with an enormous amount of domestics and things that they do an amazing job of. But from last BOT meeting, we kind of discussed that not only is Ned PD short-staffed, Boulder County is apparently short-staffed right now. I guess this was a DDA meeting, as is Gilpin County. And the more support we can get for our police officers, especially in the realm of a co-responder and this type of kind of direct access and direct mediation to mental health and kind of helping you to process things before it becomes a problem in the court or on your record. I think that's very necessary in our town. And all you have to do is read the last 10 years of police reports to realize that 60 to 70% of the calls after 10 o'clock are domestic. That, that should be number one priority. I think if we look at our town budget and the fact that most of, I wouldn't say most, but a vast majority of our town is run based upon grants. And a lot of the improvements and successes that we've had toward fulfilling our goals in the comprehensive and master plan have come as a result of grants, that a grant manager would be the next priority. And in my mind, getting a hold of our parks and recreation, especially with the increased visitation now that we've really been put on the map by everything from, you know, outdoor, outdoor Colorado to tourist magazines. We were really, really discovered during the pandemic and over the last year. I think when everybody was forced to stay home, they kind of started venturing out a little bit more. And Nederland has really been discovered over this past year. And our parks are kind of being overrun in general and has been a little bit put on the back burner. So parks would be my third priority. And then sustainability, unfortunately, I know many other folks on the board would disagree with me here. That would be my last priority, not because it's not a priority of town, but simply because it adds more burden to an already burdened town. And we should really focus on propping up those things that already exist. So that's just my thoughts.
I appreciate this feedback. So I think what I'd like to do is come back to the board to discuss how financially we could make this work, maybe a timeline of feasibility. Perhaps some are easier to do than others. For example, the parks manager, if we could then maximize on the revenue streams of Ned Rink, mountain tennis and pickleball, that's always a great opportunity to start to fund that. And so I'd like to, even including the sustainability coordinator, bring this back with more information on all four, if you're in agreement with that.
I would like to say that what Mayor Protan Baumhofer was saying about the parks manager, as, as he was describing this, I was thinking, you know, some of the things that the parks manager will be doing, it corresponds to what we would call sustainability. It involves maintaining, not sustaining perhaps, value in existing facilities and making sure that those facilities are properly maintained and are maintained in a manner that is environmentally friendly. And it would be interesting, I, I am now agreeing with Mayor Protan Baumhofer, parks manager should be next. And sustainability coordinator, nice idea, but maybe not critical. Plus, I'm thinking that the management of our parks is, is kind of a sustainability issue as well. It, it provides some of that value as well. So I'm feeling okay about the parks manager as being of higher priority than the sustainability coordinator. And I, I'm suspecting that a good parks manager that helps us to maintain those facilities well and advertise them well will also satisfy some of our sustainability goals as well. So I'm feeling pretty good about that.
Great, okay. Well, I'll bring back more information on the integration. You know, the one thing with the sustainability coordinator that's great is that we do have the funding to continue Garrett in his role for another year. So it's, that's not necessarily one that, that could be looked at for 2023 or later. While that, they've told us that's a three-year grant. Chris does feel like there are opportunities to ask for that to continue longer just because the funding will continue to be there for that sustainability grant. So we won't lose that anytime soon, I guess, is that reassurance? We could see that keep going.
Sure, good.
So last thing, we just want to recap where we go from here. So we will bring back to you at the budget work session on the 28th. Rita will provide more of the numbers, less of kind of the broad, the bigger scale conversation. But we'll of course revisit some of what we've talked about tonight. Rita, do you want to give more information about your game plan for the 28th?
Yes, so what we'll do on the 28th, you'll be shown the summary budget by each fund. So like general fund, community center. So that will be what's going to happen on that day. And really we'll discuss, you know, any feedback you have then. And I'll be adding some of these, I'll, I'll talk it over with Miranda as far as the CIP projects we discussed. And those will be included in that summary as well. And then we'll have, you know, additional board members hopefully, or BOT members to give feedback. But the, the plan is to show you a summary of dollars for each fund on the 28th.
And then from there, we will pull together the draft budget that will be posted for public review, released on October 15th. The first meeting in November is, will be moved. So you'll have back-to-back meetings in November on the second and third Tuesday because of the election. So the first public hearing would happen on November 9th. We'd then do the draft final of the budget on November 16th with the goal of the Board of Trustees approving on December 7th. Questions about where we go from here? Otherwise, we have Larry on, and I'd love to have, to talk to like tasers before we go.
Sounds good. No questions, but hopefully we can get some more of the trustees on for the next one.
I agree.
So Larry, the question was tasers and how often they're used. And then kind of the spin-off of that is, is are they absolutely necessary? Or could those funds, could that fund be moved to something else? Maybe even funding that co-responder? So turn it over to you.
So Brandon, I think, I think our key was that, does the co-responder help to mitigate our need for an alternative non-lethal solution? Or do we use our tasers a lot? Or have we used them very recently? That, that's my, that's our question.
Got it. So can everybody hear me? I just want to make sure I'm not.
I can hear you.
Using my breath up. So a couple of things. First thing, just out of the gate, tasers are 100% necessary. And the reason being is we need multiple options for less lethal or less than lethal options in case we do need to use something. So we, the, the theory behind a taser is that hopefully you can get the person into custody as quick as possible without having some sort of additional physical confrontation above and beyond what you may already have. The Bola Wrap that we will be demoing very soon is an option as well, but it's only, it only works in certain circumstances. You need a wide berth of room for it to get around people. Generally, that's probably something where they're more, where they're not as combative potentially, where a taser is more when they're potentially more combative or you need to incapacitate them immediately. The, the potential being like a person with a knife, a taser would be a much better option than the Bola Wrap. That doesn't mean that you don't also have the option or the necessary need for firearm at the same time. But that, that is an option. So when it comes to how often do we use them? Very little. But it's something that we just, we have to have one way or another. And I think any other departments that you asked would, would tell you the same thing. Our current tasers are, oh my gosh, they were back when Chief Robinson was here. So let's say 2007, 2005-ish, somewhere in that, that range. So we've got a lot of years on them, but not a lot of use. But they're also going to be not supported by taser pretty soon. They actually, we can't, we bought batteries last, into last year to support them as far as we could. And cartridges, and I think we can still get cartridges. But like, if one goes down, like it's, we can't repair them anymore. They're, they're not fixable. So we have enough to, you know, to go around for sure. I'm just thinking about planning in the future and potentially, you know, by two this year, two the next year, and just start feeding into the supply chain as opposed to taking one big hit in a few years and say, sorry, they're all no good. We need, you know, 15 grand, 20 grand, whatever that might, might look like.
So we're working with, we're working with older tasers, which are higher voltage than the newer tasers. Do we, have we thought through the, the effectiveness of the newer tasers?
So the newer taser, and I'm not a taser expert by any stretch of the imagination, but it cycles different. And apparently they are more effective than the old taser.
At the lower voltage.
I, you know what? If you're telling me that, I'll believe you because I honestly don't know what the voltage is on them. So, but I know they're more, more effective. Tasers in general are only about 50% effective when they're deployed. So meaning like you may not hit the person.
The right distance away and.
Yeah, you know, their clothing may not be conducive. The, the new taser has way more technology and it can, it, it can find a different path of electricity through clothing and stuff than the old style does.
Okay.
So co-responders, let's bring that in. Absolutely, they could be a positive option. And you know, we're all about talking people down. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to go hands-on if we don't want to. These are just those cases where that person has lost their mind or whatever you want to call it. And we just, we have to use something. Hopefully not a firearm and, and, you know, down, down the line, so.
Okay. Marshall Johnson, thank you very much. That was what I was curious about.
Thank you.
I also have heard back from Chris about the generator. But Mayor Protan Baumhofer, did you have any questions for Larry before I flip to that?
No, that was a pretty great kind of synopsis of why we need the tasers. And I appreciate all that information, Larry.
They're, they're also usable, used, used for wildlife as well. I mean, they can be used on bear, moose, lions. So that's, it's not just, it's not just a person, you know, option. You could use a mobile dog if you had to.
Yeah. All right, very good. Thank you. I feel much better about that.
Thank you.
With regards to the generator, so the generator is located in the Caribou Ridge subdivision. And Chris has shared that it's necessary for maintaining water system pressure in an event of a power outage. And that it's also needed for fire suppression in the event of a power outage. And that the existing one has been very problematic and it's costing them a lot of money to maintain. So that's the benefit in replacing that one.
Is there power that goes to that area from the grid? And this is only for when the power goes down?
I would assume so, but let me find out.
If, if that is the case, Miranda, I'm, I'm. If if that is the case, Miranda, I'm I'm talking the the an expensive option would be a an array of Tesla power walls. And then a Tesla power wall will carry, holds enough energy to run an ordinary home for three days. And it's about fifteen thousand dollars or less.
Okay.
So a bunch of Tesla power walls could run that water system for quite some while for a as long as the power typically goes out around here. Certainly for as long as you keep the diesel tank filled. And yeah, I I think that's worth considering. Fifteen thousand dollars for seventy-five kilowatt hours? That's pretty, that's a lot of power and it's cheaper than a hundred thousand bucks.
Okay.
So we're thinking about.
Yeah, definitely.
So what what we would need to know is the total number of kilowatt hours that we imagine we will need from that diesel generator, right? The diesel generator's got a tank with diesel in it and it's going to run for some certain amount of time. And it's going to put out so many kilowatts and take the number of kilowatts and the number of hours you want those kilowatts to go out, that's the number of kilowatt hours. And you divide that by seventy-five thousand, that's how many power walls you'd need.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely think was
Did you take notes, Miranda?
I took notes. Worth pursuing to see what Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, we'll get back to you with that. Are there other questions, comments or feedback?
I guess, I guess my one question would be if it would be possible to get a map of town? And what parts of our water distribution system are run off a ram pump system and what is electrical system? Especially concerning the discussions around the need to be storing more of our water rights. I am curious about upgrading a generator to back up water distribution versus maybe negotiating more water tanks and incorporating those into ram pump systems that are based upon gravity and do not fail us in the event of power outage. So I I would like a little bit more information about specifically what water distribution system that generator is backing up. I happen to know that at least three of the eight houses up on the ridge have their own backup diesel generators that provides their own water should town fail. And I guess I just would like some more specifics on why and what need that generator is backing up when the power fails. Because it does kick on every two weeks to cycle. And if it's kicking on to cycle, then kind of curious what the problems are that we need to spend a hundred grand to replace. And if we have been in discussion with the developers of that development to potentially mitigate some of the upfront costs the town would have to pay if it is necessary to upgrade it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get that information for you. Is there anything else? As we come to our end, is there anything else on your mind, things you'd like us to address the next time we all come together?
Send a nasty email to the rest of the trustees to show up. Just kidding.
We'll be sending them this YouTube video in hopes that they watch and give us their feedback. But thank you both for being here.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Thank you all for the lovely presentation and for answering our questions.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Is there anything else from Rita before she leave us?
Oh, no, I'm good. I know what to do now.
We've got, we've got our to-do list. Thank you both. Okay, well, that is it then.
Thanks, everybody.
You so much.
Good night. Night. Thank you.
Bye.
Everybody. Bye bye.